I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have seconds?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right, Dr. Smith, take it away.
Fantastic. So Superintendent's update, January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. It is chilly outside. It has remained chilly. It shall be chilly for the remainder of this week. Today, we made the decision to, uh, to our delay, obviously because it was frigid temperatures and we had a little bit of snow accumulating in the southern part of the county. So spotlight on students. First of all, the sixty-fifth annual St. Mary's County Science and Engineering Fair was held last week, January seventeenth. Unbelievable. It was held at USM-SM in Building Three, which is just a fantastic structure. It's a great opportunity for people come in and, come in and see that great resource and, and have a little preview and be able to look at some of the experiments and the spaces that are going on. Congratulations to our Junior Grand Award winners, Thomas Facito and T. Combs, both from Spring Ridge Middle School. Our Senior Grand Award winners are Rishi Sheeth and Stephen Krasny and Colin Haycraft, all from, uh, I believe they're all, I believe they're all attending Leonardtown High School. The-
Rishi's from Great Mills.
Is he from Great Mills? He's in the STEM program at Great Mills. That's right. And probably Stephen is too. So incredibly great program. I, I certainly, if you, if you went there and you saw what these students were working on, it gives you great hope for the future. I mean, the, the depth of research and creativity and personal attachment to the, their projects is just, is just phenomenal. So the Senior Grand Award winners will go on. Spotlight on students. We had a snow date last weekend. It got rescheduled to this most recent weekend, the Tri-County Honors Chorus Concert. This is a really special thing. It's very special to the, to Charles Calvert and St. Mary's. Our very most talented vocalists for this year for chorus all get together and they present. There's the middle school honors chorus and the high school honors chorus. And if you can see right on the end, you have your very own student member of the board who was on the, who was on the very end. The, the music each year is spectacular. This year in particular, it was, it was, it was inspired. It was a beautiful, beautiful concert. And thank you very much to the, to the directors that came down and rescheduled and shuffled everything so that they could be with our kids and they led them, they conducted them beautifully. Just earlier today, I was joined by Dr. Beavers and Ms. Colleen Gill and Ms. Heather Wazakinsky, Ms., who else was there? Corinne Moreno was there. Wendy Tar was there.
Lisa Bachner was there.
Lisa Bachner was there. And we, we met with the AP Students, AP Language, AP Lit, and AP Seminar students, and they were doing the big read. Ms. Ren Heisler is, is leading this initiative. It's, it's modeled after what's going on in Calvert where they actually, they read a whole novel and they get together to discuss. So we're, we're nibbling at it. Where the, the article that everybody read was "The Elite College Students Who Can't Read Books." And it was a clarion call from, from those in the Ivy League that are disappointed that the children who find their way to their institutions don't necessarily have the background and persistence to be able to read novels. So we had a, a really long discussion about, about what draws a, a student to read a, a novel, and then how important it is that the novel is relevant and it's engaging to them and that it has something that, that really is meaningful to them. So, great conversation. I hope that this is something that can continue. I, I know that all the adults in the room, myself included, really impressed with, with the young people and talking about something that's near and dear to my heart, which is of course, reading. The Forest Center on January twenty-third, tomorrow night, is the, is the STEM, is the St. Mary's County Tech Expo. I, I'm sure we're gonna have the better part of a thousand people there. So spread your time out and be patient and be marveled by what is offered to students today and the, the pathways that are present in our school system. The BECA Scholarship Fair is next week, January twenty-ninth. And again, it will also be held at the University System of Maryland at Southern Maryland, again in that same hall. So where, if you were, if you came out for the, the STEM Fair, the Science and Engineering Fair, the exact same place, come out to the BECA Scholarship Fair. On annually, it's well over two hundred thousand dollars worth, worth of scholarships that are available to students. And many of these scholarships are, are additional. They're things, they're things to help with the expenses as you go off to two-year and four-year industry trades, programming, all of this. It's real, there's something really there for everybody. So please circle that date on your calendar and be there. Snow days, once again, just reminding everybody, we've used three. We don't have any more. So if we have snow days, we're gonna have to look at February seventeenth, which is President's Day, April twenty-first, which is the Monday after spring break. And if we exceed those, then we'd have to add days at the end of June. But as of right now, we put in three days, we've used three days. So may all the inclement weather and the beautiful snow fall on Saturdays and Sundays. So that's, that's where we are. For this week, we find ourselves, we, we, the, we've, we've ended the marking period. Principals and teachers are, they're all working on all of that right now. There will be report card distribution on Tuesday of next week. And the last Friday, the thirty-first, is a professional day for staff, no school for students. And with that, I turn it over to Ms. Hannah Heisler.
All right. So I'm excited to announce that as of the end of break and then my visit to Leonardtown Elementary School, we're done the fifteen of our school visits. So we just have a few, few more. And two of those were scheduled during snow days.
Right.
But we are rescheduling them because of snow.
Yes.
Um, for our Superintendent Student Leadership Council, we're looking into planning Rising Freshman Night. And specifically, how we're going to be doing that is in-school lunch meetings. So Slack is going to come to every high school to meet with those high school Slack students specifically to plan for Rising Freshman Night. So I'm really excited about that. We have Leonardtown's tomorrow. And so for St. Mary's Association of Student Councils, we have our General Assembly tomorrow. Really awesome workshops about the legislative session, about nonprofits in the community. And then I'm presenting a workshop on how to testify in court. So there's actually a lot of bills that are proposed that have to do with the school board. So I'm very excited to see what students have to say about that. And then this Saturday is the Maryland Association of Student Councils Winter Leadership Conference. And I'm actually presenting a workshop about how to be a S-Mob to middle schoolers. And I'm really, really excited for that. That's gonna be awesome. And then we will all be voting for the two finalists for the Maryland State S-Mob. So very big deal. There's a lot of candidates. They're all reaching out. But we only can nominate two finalists. And then the governor gets to pick from there. And I know that for the Winter Leadership Conference, we will be having delegates from lots of high schools. Great Mills can't come this time, but Leonardtown and Shropshire Con will be there. And then I hope to see some middle school friends as well.
Great.
And then my school visit to Leonardtown Elementary School on the fifteenth. It was right when we were back from break, right when we were back from snow. But they told me a lot of awesome things. So I asked them, what does it mean to be here? And they said, to increase our knowledge. They said they're here for their ninety-four percent attendance skill, or their attendance goal, and they're here to increase their social skills and kindness, which I thought was very insightful, that fifth graders were able to say that. And they're also here so that their student voices are heard. And they're here for math.
They like math.
They love math. Um, they said they're super engaged in class by using their active listening and active learning practices. They love doing science labs, games and math, creating posters and learning, and performing the preamble to the Constitution.
Constitution, yep.
Which was really impressive. I said, performing the preamble, and they stood up and started performing.
They know it.
Wow. It was really impressive. They don't even make us do that at AP Government.
Right.
So that was awesome. When I asked them what it means to be approachable, they said that you don't wanna be someone that other people want to avoid, which is definitely major. They said it can severely harm you. If you need help, no one will, no one will help you, or no one will give you peer feedback. And in their classroom, they have a practice called Ask Three Before Me. So that's if a student has a question, they have to ask three other students before they ask the teacher. So that kinda forces them to talk to each other and forces them to be more approachable. So that was a really cool idea. And then they're also here to be a role model for other students, including their safety patrol. I was there on a very contentious day because the safety patrol announcements were that, were that day. So very contentious day. The safety patrol announcements were, were forthcoming. So I'm hoping that everybody got, got the safety patrol that they wanted. But I think it's, it's a really awesome program. They also have community gatherings with Minute to Win It and One Million Pages Challenge, which is super cool, something I've never heard of. But as a school, they are all logging the amount of books and the amount of pages that they read and hoping that their whole school gets to a million pages, and then they get a big reward. So that's really cool. A million pages is a lot. And then they said they have really approachable teachers and they just love learning with their teachers. When I asked them what it means to be renewed in school, they were first confused by the word renewed. It's a confusing word. But they, they said, well, you can just go to the calm-down corner, help you calm down every day. And they have one in a lot of their classes. Or you can just ask for help. They like to take walks, play games. And then they actually have clubs built into their weekly schedule. So every single kid is involved in the club, and they have a ton of clubs. They listed a few for me, like Color Me Calm, a coloring club, Anchor for Life, Board Game Club, Club Osprey. And they really, really loved their clubs. They raised their hand so many times to say how awesome their clubs are. So that sounds really awesome. They also have a joke of the day, which they look forward to. And they love the spirit games on Spirit Week. They also have Golden Apple Reader. So going along with their Million Pages Challenge, Golden Apple Readers are more singular. So one person can get Golden Apple Reader when they log a certain amount of pages. And then they have this really cute thing where you can donate a book to the library in your name. So if you're a Golden Apple Reader, you can write your name on the inside cover of one of the books. And then everybody that reads it in the future will see your name, and they'll know that you are a Golden Apple Reader. So that is really special. And a ton of kids actually raised their hand saying that they got it. So that was really awesome.
Yeah.
Um, they love sports, football recess, field day. They love their band strings and chorus program. And then at the end, we, we got all the top ten, and the teacher said, no, we have one more. Our kids are super kind and empathetic. And that is just what we wanna hear from our fifth graders. So that was really awesome.
A great visit. All right. So concludes our report.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank, all right. We have no recognitions. We have two public hearings this evening. The first one is the High School Program of Studies. So do we have anyone who signed up for the High School Program of Studies?
All right.
All right, last call. And I believe that we still have, you can still, if you would like to, you can still provide written comments.
You can still submit.
To the school system.
Boe@SMCPS.org?
To do that.
Please do.
Okay. All right. Then the next one is on the Superintendent's Proposed Budget for Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Six. Okay. We, we do have a presentation before our speaker comes up, just because the governor's budget did drop, so.
Yes, we wanna give, we wanna give a little preview.
We just have a very brief update from Ms. McCord.
Yes.
And Dr. Smith.
Mostly Mrs. McCord.
Correct.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
So we'll start with doing a quick review of the last two board meetings and the budget presentations. As a reminder, the budget priorities of the Superintendent's Budget, they do include meeting the negotiated agreements to provide a step increase in a two percent COLA to our teachers, a new salary scale adjustment, step increase and one percent COLA to our support staff, and to our administrators, a new scale, step increase, and a one percent COLA. The Superintendent's Budget does include funding for health insurance increases as well as pension. And it also includes support for our transportation contract to bus drivers and attendant wage increases, bus driver retention stipend, as well as a contract increases to include PVA operations and maintenance. There are reductions in positions proposed, ten in total, to align with the declining enrollment. Part of the reason for that ten is to assist in offsetting the revenues. The proposed budget, as originally presented, included a four percent increase on local funding of five point three million dollars, an increase of state funding of four point three million dollars, increase in federal funding of nineteen thousand dollars, and increase in other funding sources of seven hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Overall, the recommended budget totals two hundred and ninety-three point two million dollars, or an increase of ten point four million dollars in recurring revenues. However, there is a decrease in non-recurring revenues. The current year's budget for fiscal two thousand and twenty-five included seven million dollars in non-recurring revenues, use of fund balance, which is reduced in two thousand and twenty-six to one point five million dollars, or an overall reduction of five point five million dollars. Those two revenue sources combined reflect a resulting recommended budget of two hundred and ninety-four point eight million dollars, or an overall net increase of four point nine million dollars, reflecting a one point seven percent increase overall in the Superintendent's Proposed Budget. This slide shows the details of the state funding as submitted in the Superintendent's Budget, and that reflects an overall increase of four point three million dollars. However, last week, the governor's budget was released on Wednesday, followed by a state aid release of, of information from MSD on Thursday. The numbers that were released by MSD, they were released on the same day that the Controller's Office released the two thousand and twenty-three net taxable income. The net taxable income is a component of the wealth calculation for the state aid calculation. I took the state aid's numbers that were released last week and overlaid them with the Controller's net taxable income numbers that were released on the same day. And I also included the career ladder certifications that, of, of the National Board Certified Teachers that were achieved in December. Those numbers overall reflected one hundred and forty-seven point four million dollars in state aid projected for fiscal two thousand and twenty-six for St. Mary's County Public Schools as compared to the current budget of one hundred and forty-three point three million dollars. So an overall increase of four point one million dollars, or as compared to the Superintendent's Proposed Budget, an overall decrease projected of one hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars as compared to two weeks ago. That would be great news if that happens. So bottom line, there were a couple of changes that were made. We maintained the local funding projection of four percent or five point three million dollars. There's an adjustment to the state aid, moving that down to an increase of four point one million dollars. We maintain the federal fund increase of nineteen thousand dollars. However, we pushed the net decrease from the state aid into other, reflecting an overall increase in that line of one million fifty-four thousand dollars. And the offset in the other line is recognizing our increase in interest income. The final bottom line of the recommended budget was adjusted to two hundred and ninety-four million dollars, or an overall net increase of five million dollars. So the Superintendent's Proposed Budget was an overall increase of one point seven percent. It is now at one point seven six percent. That point zero six percent increase is associated with our new T, NBC teachers that just achieved. The presentation on this slide here reflects by category, again, no significant changes, just the additional NBC that I achieved. So as you can see by category, the most notable changes are within the instructional salaries and wages with an increase of three point two million dollars, as well as offsetting fixed charges of one point six million dollars. Again, an overall net increase of five million dollars for a one point seven six percent increase. As I stated, the governor's budget was released last week. In the forward-facing governor's budget, it did not include any reductions. However, there is the budget highlights that included all of the reductions. It included reductions for foundation. It specifically stated that it includes contingent reduction to delay the implementation of the collaborative time per pupil amount pending legislation. And as soon as you reduce a foundation amount, it has a trickle effect to compensatory education, which is tied back to your foundation amount, as well as the limited English proficiency amount. There was also a reduction in special education, changing the, adjusting the state share from seventy percent to sixty percent of the cost of non-public placements over a certain amount statewide. That was a twenty-five million dollar reduction. And the state pension system, the buffer includes provisions to pass half of this increase in retirement costs over FY twenty-five to the local governments. Statewide, that was a fiscal impact of ninety-two million dollars that's being passed from state to the local governments. The Excellence in Maryland Public Schools Act was also dropped. That was on Monday, I believe.
Yesterday, Tuesday.
And that specifically laid out the adjusted target per pupil adjustments. So the state aid numbers that were provided by the Maryland State Department of Education last week were per current statute, current blueprint law. However, the Excellence in Maryland Public Education Act includes the proposed cuts that align with the governor's budget highlights. And as I just stated, it does include the foundation amounts, special education, compensatory education, and multi-language learners. We took those numbers, Dr. Smith and I did, and compared those proposed excellence and public education amounts to the existing statute per blueprint. And as you can see, there are pretty staggering changes. The numbers that are reflected on the screen include both the state and county numbers. It is not wealth equalized. So two point six million dollars would be the total impact in two thousand and twenty-six. And as you can see, gradual increases, five point four million dollars in two thousand and twenty-seven, eight point three million dollars in two thousand and twenty-eight. And it's been, I calculated about through two thousand and thirty-three per the proposed law of thirteen million dollars annually. So the cumulative impact of the proposed law is seventy-eight million dollars as a reduction in foundation funding as compared to the current statute. It also has an impact on the compensatory education funding because it's formula-driven. A, a percentage of the foundation funds is the per pupil amount for compensatory education. So in fiscal two thousand and twenty-six, the amount of funding delta or decrease as a result of the proposed legis, legislation is eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars for this revenue source. Cumulative through two thousand and thirty-three, it's a twenty-three million dollar decrease in funding to St. Mary's County Public Schools. And for the multilingual, multilingual learner formula, seventy-eight thousand dollars for the impact in two thousand and twenty-six, or cumulative through two thousand and thirty-three of two point three million dollars. Specifically, if we take last week's state aid calculated amount, which have been overlaid with the net taxable income amount provided by the Controller's Office, and apply this new proposed legislation, we're looking at a reduction in our foundation funding as compared to the state aid formula of one point five million dollars, a reduction in our compensatory education monies of four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, reduction to our special education tuition specifically for our non-public students of one hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, and a reduction to our limited English proficiency funds of forty-three million dollars. So overall, we've estimated the impact of the new legislation to our state aid component of our funding of two point two million dollar reduction for fiscal two thousand and twenty-six. In addition to that, there is the pension shift to local governments, which we've locally calculated to be one point five million dollars. Dr. Smith, did I miss anything there?
No, just, so if you, if you read the Baltimore Sun or the Baltimore Banner or a lot of the conversation, they make it sound as if, well, we're not gonna move forward with that collaborative planning time money. And you know, we don't have enough teachers to put it in anyway. And, and, and you might be lulled into the sense that this isn't a dramatic and significant cut to what we anticipated for revenue. But just for St. Mary's County, from now until two thousand and thirty-three, we're talking about a hundred million dollars worth of cut funding that we were supposed to, that we, that we anticipated receiving from the state based on the law that is currently passed. Moreover, we're caught in this, in this limbo because MSD has given us numbers that we can't count on. We're all, we're all just gonna be watching whatever happens up in Annapolis for the next three months. Because I doubt that much of this may be determined by the time we all, by the time we get to April. And by the time we get to April, we will have already had all of our opportunity with the county commissioners and probably gone, gotten ready for the, you know, the larger public hearing and things such as this. So this is a, this is a really challenging time, and certainly a time when everyone needs to pay attention and do the math for themselves. Don't rely on somebody else doing the math. Do the math for yourself. In a long, best-case scenario, we're asking the county commissioners for five point four million dollars of four percent increase aligned to the amount of money that they're providing to their county governments and other elect, and other boards. If this comes to pass, we'll have no place else to turn but to county governments for the additional three point eight million dollars. And I don't certainly wanna come before the commissioners and ask for nine million dollars. I believe that that might, I wouldn't necessarily have the warmest of, of greetings. So if you go to the next slide, this is hot off the presses. The Department of Legislative Services does a calculation every single year where they rank all of the school systems based on the state and local funding to see how much money each county receives per student. And St. Mary's County has been as low as twenty-four out of twenty-four. But we have moved up steadily over the past several years and find ourselves twenty out of twenty-four. And it's because of the county commissioners funding us over maintenance of effort. We're a couple hundred dollars off the bottom, the lowest funded per pupil school in the state of Maryland, and we're six thousand dollars- and we're six thousand dollars from the top, which is Baltimore City. And so, if you just wanna do some little back-of-the-envelope math, six thousand dollars times sixteen thousand three hundred and seventy students, which is the per pupil amount, we're talking over ninety million dollars worth of additional funding if we were funded at the same level as, say, Baltimore City. The whole purpose of the Kerwin Commission, and ultimately the blueprint, was to make sure that school systems had the adequate resources and accessible, so to make education accessible for all students. And that chart looks the same as it did five years ago, ten years ago, fifteen years ago, twenty years ago. And I just, it's it's hard not to see a broken promise. That being said, we have great people working on behalf of students every single day. We have a, we have a tight and totally appropriate budget, and we will look forward to answering any questions that anybody might bring forward about how we are spending money in St. Mary's County.
So, at this time, I'll turn it over to you for the public hearing. But we are scheduled to have your approval of the recommended budget next Wednesday, February fifth. And then the county commissioners do have their hearing on their recommended budget on April twenty-second. The commissioners are scheduled to provide final direction on their operating budget on May twentieth, and with the Board of Education scheduled to adopt your budget on May twenty-first. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Kim, you said we have one public comment?
Yes. Do you have your way, Hannah Card?
If you come to the.
Podium.
To the podium over here. You have three minutes. Kim's gonna time you. She'll, she'll give you, she'll give you the signal.
Good evening. Chairman of the Board of Education, Mrs. Bailey, Vice Chair, Mrs. Allen, Members, Mrs. Washington, Member, Mrs. Andrews, Member, Mr. Guy, and Student Board Member, Ms. Hess.
Heisler.
Hestinger.
Heisler.
Heisler. And Superintendent, Dr. Smith.
Thank you.
I'm here today to express my support for the Superintendent's Proposed Budget. This budget not only meets our critical needs in our school system, but also reflects fiscal responsibility and vision for the future. This year has been an incredible accomplishment by both our staff and students. For example, Lenartown High School getting a bronze medal for AP testing. Twenty-five percent of their students passed, passed the AP test. And recently, Green Holly Elementary School receiving a prestigious School of Excellence Award. The only school in the state of Maryland to receive that award was Green Holly Elementary, right here in St. Mary's County. There, there are just a few examples of outstanding achievements that demonstrate the strength of our school community. The success of our students and our schools is directly related to the hard-working, dedicated backbone of SMCPS, the employees who come to work every day and do their part to make school system provide safe, clean, appropriate challenged, appropriately-challenged learning that meets the needs of all our students. This budget ensures our continued, our continued attracting and retaining of employees that support our students every day. The proposed budget will ensure that we continue to build on the success and provide the resources and staffing necessary to continue growth and excellence. I urge everyone to support the Superintendent's Proposed Budget. It helps us to move forward confidently, and it shows the great fiscal responsibility that this Board of Education takes, based on the previous slide. So, I urge everyone to support this budget, whether you're in this room or at home. This budget supports students, and we thank you for your hard and tireless work. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment? Okay. With that, the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget is closed. However, there are still opportunities. If you would like to, you can send comments to BOE at SMCPS.org. All right. Let's see. Do we have any public comment? May I have an motion to approve the consent agenda?
Tonight's consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes of January twen- uh, January ninth, 2025, and January fifteenth, 2025, personnel, teachers. There are no administrative and supervisory appointments, and a request for FY twenty-five threshold, increase of indefinite quantity, contract RFP, SMCPS 2023-03 DSSDC for building, commissioning services at various sites. With that, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have no action items this evening. Since we've reserved our time for our public hearing on the budget and the program of studies, we have no informational items. And so, our next regular board meeting will be on Wednesday, February fifth. Executive session will begin at eight o'clock, and the open meeting will begin at nine. And with that, we are adjourned.